Hey, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. Thank you all for being so faithful and supportive of our effort to stay connected, especially on this Wednesday Town Hall gathering. I keep looking at the long list since April or May, and it's amazing that the ground we've covered. We decided that during Advent, we've used the Wednesdays of Advent as spiritual preparation for Christmas. And so we're happy to have Jan Stegner with us tonight. And a lot is on the theme of hope, which is what we need right now. As the scale of the virus, both infection deaths and hospitalizations is increasing sadly at enormous rates. We really need to pray that everyone will do whatever they can to mitigate this and to follow the directives that we know will help to de-escalate and bring these rate of infections down. There are, next week, I'll give a few community announcements now. Next week, we will have with us, let's see, who is on the third Sunday? Oh, my gosh.
McGovern, you said.
I'm forgetting. Well, I know the fourth week.
Kathy McGovern.
Kathy McGovern, I'm sorry. She's a dear friend from Denver. And if you read our bulletin, when we have a bulletin with regularity, there's a column called "The Story and You." And Kathy McGovern is the author of that. She's an old friend of mine from Denver, Colorado, a scripture teacher and catechist. And she'll be with us talking about hope. And then the last Wednesday, Father Ryan Thornton Franciscan. You'll remember Ryan as this younger seminarian who did some internship at St. Perpetual with our youth ministry and turned out to be just a phenomenal preacher of the word. And he was in Rome when I contacted him. But he'll be back in the States and he'll be with us that last Wednesday. And we've got several, Father Tom Bonacci, who'll be with us in the future, so stay with us. I want to ask your prayers for a couple intentions for our school community. You know, they're back in school these two weeks before Christmas for morning sessions, just eight till noon. And I ask you to pray for the families, the faculty and staff, and especially the children, that they can have a good experience while the rest of us struggle. I hope their struggle is not like ours. And then one of our young members, Cole Comby, who's had precarious health all of his young life, is in Stanford Hospital, bringing a lot of anxiety to his parents, who are dear members of our community. So we pray for Cole. And then we received word yesterday that another parishioner, Damian Panessa, his wife, I had the funeral for his wife less than two years ago, and he died of a sudden heart attack two nights ago, leaving behind a son at De La Salle and a son at Georgetown University. So we pray especially for those two young men for consolation, strength and peace. So let us pray. Christ, we await your coming and we respond to your invitation to journey to your holy mountain, where the lion can lie down with the lamb. Help us to be like John the Baptist, so we may recognize and announce your love to a world and the shadow of a COVID darkness. Spark our creativity, so we may create a way to your justice and peace. Working with our sisters and brothers to open new vistas, promote new ways of being community and in communion. May the wings of the Holy Spirit open softly and unfold us this night, gracing us with your loving presence. And we ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. So Jan, the floor is yours. We're so happy to have you with us again and lift our spirits and our hearts.
Thank you very much. I'm really happy to be here again. A few things before we get started. I was at St. Vincent de Paul today in Concord, St. Francis of Assisi Parish. And I know we're doing a food drive December, well, on Sunday. And I just want to thank you all in advance for any generous items that you give to St. Vincent de Paul. The line was long today, folks, and it's just, you know, it's just really heartbreaking to see these moms there with their kids and stuff. So I just thanking you in advance for the collection of food. I'll be there on Sunday to help unpack it. So tonight, I just want to tell you how we're going to, almost. Tonight, we'll be talking about our third Sunday of Advent. I know we talked last week and we were talking about St. Josephine Bakhita and talking about faith and hope. But after talking to Father John and seeing that this Sunday is our third Sunday of Advent, and the theme is hope, we decided to change it up a little bit. But before I begin, I just want to tell you a little something about, I've been doing a four-week series via Zoom, and each, I've taken each Sunday, the theme of each Sunday, and meshed it with a woman of faith. So the first Sunday of Advent, we talked about hope and Sister Helen Presian. Sister Helen is a strong advocate against the death penalty, and she supports our Catholic social justice ideals. She raises awareness for dignity of each and every human being, and she gives hope to those on death row. Last week during the series, we talked about a woman that not, I don't think I hadn't heard about her, but not too many people had heard of, St. Josephine Bakida. I invite you, if you ever have time to look her up, she, it's a remarkable story and a story of incredible faith. She was born in Sudan and was kidnapped when she was eight years old, and she was forced into slavery. And for the next 12 years, she was bought and sold a dozen times. She was treated very poorly by most of her slave owners. And in one incident in particular, she received 114 scars for one incident. And she thought that she would die. So it's an incredible story. She was sold after that incident happened. She was sold to the Italian vice consul, who was much kinder. And she later was placed in the custody of the Consonan Religious Order. And she discerned a call from Christ, and she ended up going, being a religious nun for that order for 42 years. She lived as the doorkeeper and the doorkeeper. But the amazing thing about her is when asked, "What would you do, Josephine, if you were to meet your kidnappers today?" She says, "I would get on my knees and I would kiss their hands, because without them, I would have never come to meet Jesus." So again, I invite you to look her up, St. Josephine Bakida. Her feast day is February 8. So tonight, we're going to talk about joy, and we're going to talk about it in relation to Julian of Norwich. And she also has a very interesting story. So what it's going to look like is I'm going to talk a little bit about Advent, a little bit about joy, a little bit about how Julian is a model of joy. And then if we have time, I've got a little fun reading that I'd like to do at the end. So Joy and Julian of Norwich, the Joy of God. Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Whenever I do a workshop or retreat, especially during this time, I like to bring in the word hope, because like Father John said, it's something we all need. So I found this neat little slide, even in the midst of further restrictions, we continue on with hope. Okay, so we're on week three of Advent, and we are not lighting a purple candle this week. We will be lighting our pink candle, and pink is our symbol for joy. One of my favorite metaphors of hope is that we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. And that's exactly what's happening with this third Sunday of Advent. We will read here, reflect on Scripture in both the Old and the New Testaments about the joy of salvation and the joy of salvation in Jesus Christ. We rejoice in week three, because indeed our Lord is near. And in other words, the week celebrates the joy of Christ's coming to earth. This week, we want to emphasize joy, especially at a time of the year when it is dark, cold, and depression tends to run at its highest. And I haven't even mentioned COVID-19 yet and the extremely high rates that we see and our increased shelter in place. So I invite us all this evening, for the next 45 minutes or so, to wrap yourselves in joy. And by joy, I don't mean try to put on a happy face for the next 45 minutes, but I invite you to open your heart to the goodness of God's grace this evening. So let's rejoice this evening. We rejoice in the fact that we can be with each other via Zoom. We rejoice in our warm homes. We have food on our tables. Our bodies are relatively healthy. We have means of communication via email, computer, phones, texting, TV, radio. We rejoice that we have met new friends via our computer meetings and gatherings. I was talking via Zoom to a gentleman the other day, and he was so happy. He said, "Jan, I've met so many new people via all my Zoom gatherings." So we even can rejoice in the fact that we can go online and pick out the latest and craziest mask for ourselves or for somebody for Christmas. So tonight, we rejoice. Tonight, we think of joy. So on that note, what is joy? When we look in the Bible and in our faith tradition, we discover a number of important points about the experience of joy. The first point is that joy is a fruit or a consequence of knowing that God is near. At Christmas, we celebrate, and I quote Scripture, the Gospel of John, "The word may flesh who lives among us." We also can quote John, chapter 15, "These things I have spoken to you, so that my joy may be in you, and your joy may be made full." God is in our midst, and He offers us the people He loves, the fullness of joy for which we were made. When we accept the friendship of God, we experience joy. We read in Scripture, "Oh, God, you are to my heart a richer joy than all." We read that in the Psalms. Or in Luke, we read, "Rejoice so highly favored, the Lord is with you." Part of the reason why many of us struggle to find joy at Christmas is because we tend to confuse joy with feeling good. Happiness can be a temporary fleeting thing, and it usually depends on something outside of ourselves, okay, to make us happy. Joy, on the other hand, is a constant. It is an awareness that a loving God will never abandon us. In a world of advertising, which peaks at this time of the year, which, let me tell you, when I was putting together the slides for our PowerPoint tonight, I kept getting pop-ups of so many ads, because it's sales and it's this time of the year. So, but during this time of the year, we are encouraged to feel good all the time and to get whatever it takes to make us happier. And the source of our joy is not, though, in what we have. It lies in Emmanuel, the name, which means "God is with us." Truth about joy. Joy is an elation based in hope. Joy is rooted in truth. Joy is disciplined praise. Joy is not rooted in circumstances. Instead, it is rooted in God's provision. A second feature or point of joy in the Bible is that it comes through God saving work. God's presence among His people is not motionless. And I'll show examples of this. I'll tell examples of this, but really think of a fluid motion. It is constantly in action. It is constantly moving. So when God's people experience His salvation, joy flows in abundance. For example, we see it when Mary, whose spirit, quote, "rejoices in God, my Savior, for the Almighty has done great things for me," which we read in Luke, when Mary says her fiat, her yes to the angel Gabriel, we see the joy for her. We see it when Mary goes to visit Elizabeth, and the infant and the baby, John the Baptist leaps for joy in Elizabeth's womb. And we see it in the three great parables of mercy in Luke, chapter 15, where the stories of the lost sheep, the lost coin, and the prodigal son all end in a rejoicing that flows from restoration, healing, and forgiveness. It brings it all into a full circle in these readings. A circle of mercy, a full circle of compassion, and a full circle of love. Joy is produced by God's action. Like I said, it's always in motion. Christian joy is letting Christ live His life out through you, so that what He is, you become. So what this teaches us is that joy is produced from God's action in our lives, and it moves toward harmony and right order. God's Spirit is always leading us into deeper communion with each other and with Him. His Spirit moves us from slavery to freedom, from darkness to light, from turmoil to harmony. God is always forming us. Again, there's that movement. He's forming us to become more perfect in love. And when God's saving action brings this about, joy is the result. A third feature or a third point is that experience of joy from God's salvation leads to worship, which leads to more joy. We read in Psalm 43, "Then I will go into the altar of God unto God, my exceeding joy." God's salvation on His people, on us, reminds us that we will not be separated from God or God's love. With this, I can't help think about all of us in this moment, our times right now. I am so thankful for our Zoom, the masses that we have on Zoom, for these Town Hall meetings we have on Zoom. But personally, I'm a people person, and I miss the lack of personal touch that we had at Mass, saying our Father and holding hands, the kiss of peace with each other, taking part in the Eucharist together, even getting together after Mass to have coffee and donuts. The reason for this is because it's hard. It's hard. We're all in shelter in place, and it's a tough time to be here. But we all know that the Christian faith cannot be confined to one's private life. Christianity is news of great joy, a joy to be shared by the whole people. The joy of some is the joy of all, and it is found where people gather and pray, and hearts are filled with gratitude. We see this in the Beatitudes, in the Eight Blessings recounted by Jesus in the Gospels of Matthew and Luke, where Jesus teaches us how to be blessed, and when we are blessed, joy ensues. The catechism of the Catholic Church states, and I quote, "In God the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, there is unending life, joy, and communion." This insight raises the question, how often do we contemplate God's nature as joyful love? How often do we contemplate God's nature as joyful love? I suspect many of us are more likely, or were taught, to image God as stern and serious, rather than overflowing with abundant joy. Yet, when we reflect on the life of Jesus, a joyful God is who He reveals. In Luke, we read, "At that time, full of joy, through the Holy Spirit, Jesus exclaimed, 'I praise you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth.'" "In the midst of a world weighed down by troubles, we are people of God who are possessed by a divine joy, and that is contagious and attractive." Divine joy, knowing even though of our sufferings, a loving God stands with us and never leaves our side. And I like this quote. It says, "Joy is not the absence of suffering. It is the presence of God." Mother Teresa has a quote, and it says, "Joy is a net of love by which we catch souls, for the one filled with joy preaches without preaching." I just love that. Joy is a net of love by which we catch souls, for the one filled with joy preaches without preaching. As Christmas approaches, we may well experience feelings of melancholy, sadness, despair, for many legitimate reasons, especially the big one that we face every day, the pandemic. But let us also have the courage to rejoice in the Lord, in His presence, in His gift of salvation, in our praise of Him, in our hope of heaven, and in His ways. God is the source of joy. He's the source of our joy, for He, God, is joy. And we must remember that joy is a choice. It is a quiet confidence that ultimately, everything is going to be all right in every situation. So with that, we move on to our Julia of Norwich. And we're going to talk about, a little bit about her history, her life. And then we're going to compare and contrast and see why Julian models joy for us. So this is a really typical picture of Julian. When I was researching the photos for this PowerPoint, this one came up a lot of the time. So it's a favorite public photo of Julian. She was an English mystic. She lived the life of a recluse or a solitary. And she did this in order to pursue a life of holiness in a completely undistracted way. She was an Ankarist, which is the Greek word for "to retire." She lived from about 1342 to about 1416. We're not really quite sure, but we think that's around the time. So that's a good 73 to 74 years, which is a long life for somebody in medieval times. Like I said, there's not a lot known about her early life for younger years. However, we can assume that she was probably from a well-to-do, even noble family, as she seems to have had some level of education, given that she could read before she became an Ankarite. When she was 30, she suffered an illness so serious that her life chance of survival was deemed hopeless. And we don't know whether or not it was the Black Death, which was prevalent in England at the time, or some other disease, but as her illness progressed, she was paralyzed to the extent that she could barely move her eyelids. She was given the last rites and prepared to die. And I like this slide, because it shows her getting the last rites. Of course, it has Jesus with her, but it says she's holding the sign that says, "The fullness of joy is to behold God in everything." And what happened with Julia is that her illness, in a very short amount of time, 16 to 24 hours, her illness brought on a series of visions in which she encountered Jesus Christ and His mother, the Virgin Mary. There were the 16 visions were to form the basis for the direction of her spiritual life and her book, which charts her struggle to understand the divine. She wrote two versions of Revelations of Divine Love. The short text is believed to have been written soon after experiencing her visions. The longer text is six times longer than the short text, and it is much more contemplative, and it appears to have been a constant work in progress for her later years. The second version was her project, as she prayed, gave spiritual direction, and lived her life in solitude. The work of the book was the other thing that she did with the second half of her life. Although her near-death experience directed her life, it was many years after her illness that Julian entered the cell as an Ankarite. I believe the closeness that she came to God during her illness allowed her to make the decision to become religious and live her life in solitude. The exact date for her to live in solitude is uncertain, but it is believed to have been somewhere in the 1390s, that her enclosure may have come, which means she would have been maybe 47, 48 years old. And it's really an interesting rite that happens when someone decides to go live in solitude and become an Ankarist. It actually is a rite, and it is almost like a funeral rite. What happens is the parish, which you choose to remain in, to sell yourself often, C-E-L-L. There is a procession with the pastor of the parish or who has ever in charge of the parish. There's an actual procession that leads to the church. There is a ritual of a sprinkling of dust on the person that's going to go into solitude. Prayers, funeral prayers, funeral songs are played, and then the procession goes straight to the cell in which the Ankarite will live. So she voluntarily lived in a cell that was adjoining to the parish and the school of St. Julian in Conisford at Norwich, England. So legend has it that perhaps we don't even know her given birth name. Perhaps we know her by Julian of Norwich, because that is where she stayed when she lived as an Ankarite in her cell. Let's see, she was literally sealed to her cell, and she agreed to remain there until her death. And if she were to come out, she would be threatened with excommunication. Now, through her window, and this is it right there, through her window, there was a squint, as they called it. And she can watch a very narrow opening, and she can watch and hear mass for the church service through another part of the room, which is this front part that you see here. It opened up to the world, and she could give spiritual counsel, and that was what she was expected to do. The purpose was a complete openness and oneness to God and prayer. Rules were written to Ankarists during the Middle Ages to indicate that Julian would have had at least one fair-sized room, which is probably the one that we're looking at here, and possible several rooms with her own private chapel. So it wasn't a cell when we think of a cell, but it was very small, very rugged, and it was certainly a different way of living than living out in the normal world. There was a window that opened out for those who sought her advice, which we look at here. And there may have been some sort of a parlor to which it opened out to act as a shelter from different weather conditions for different parts of the year. She would have a maid to cook and clean for her. However, her daily interactions with her servant would be completely restricted, just dealing with physical needs, no friendship or companionship. She was also allowed to keep a cat to control the rats and the mice. And we'll see in another slide, she is often depicted in icons with the cat and a book. Legend has it, which I don't know about this one, she may be the patron saint of cats, but I'm not quite sure about that one. Her diet would have been simple, but not meager. But as a matter of fact, the eating disorder called anorexia mirabilis, also known as holy anorexia, was an eating disorder that was common in the Middle Ages in Europe. It largely affected religious women. It was a way for the religious women to imitate Christ's torture during the Passion. Men would usually self-harm themselves. Women would starve themselves. She would have been expected to recite the full office, the full cycle of canonical prayers for the day. She would have been expected to recite the full office, the full cycle of canonical prayers for the daily given day. And although this sounds like a radical enclosure, Julian had a gift for deep contemplation, deep prayer. And this measure of silence and privacy supported this profound inwardness. She was the first woman to write a book in English, her native language. And these are other icons that support that, showing her with a book and a pen writing. And remarkably, I found this really interesting. She wrote Revelations on her own. She did not dictate any of it to a scribe, which was a common thing to do during that time. Julian wrote the book on her own. And as we talked about Revelations, it is a spiritual autobiography contemplating the relationship between love, sin, suffering, and God. Its message of love, peace, and joy still give it reverence today. And her thoughts are possibly more widely respected now than at any time in the past. She rewrote the book some 20 years later, this time taking her time and revisiting the text. And I, I just love this part because a lot of the retreats and spirituality I do have to deal with, deal with women. And in the first book she wrote, she wrote a little sidebar, and she wrote, quote, "God forbid that you should say or assume that I am a teacher, for I am a woman ignorant, weak, and frail." Well, when 20 years came along and she rewrote the second book, she removed this disclaimer and completely took it out. So she knew who she was by then. She accepted her role as spiritual counselor, knowing full well that whatever she was and would accomplish was not her will, but God's will. She was a great believer in moving a person or reader from, from conventional religious beliefs, which she believed could impede spiritual growth. In a medieval world that believed God was judgmental and a god of damnation, Julian taught of a God of love and mercy, which she was well above her time with that. She taught of a God that was slow to anger. And in a time when humanity was divided into classes, Julian taught that all creation is one. And in the time when the world was mired with poverty, disease, war, and plagues, Julian taught of God's assurance and was often quoted as saying, "All will be well." And this is one of my favorite quotes of hers. "All shall be well, and all shall be well, and all manner of things shall be well." Her spiritual insights and concepts rich in symbolism earned her the reputation of brilliant theologian and skilled author. And a quote from Julian states, "I saw a great oneness between Christ and us, because when he was in pain, we were in pain. All creatures of God's creation that can suffer pain suffered with him. The sky and the earth failed at the time of Christ's dying, because he too was part of nature." Julian died in or shortly after 1416 and around the age of 73 or 74. She is remembered in the Anglican, the Church of England church, on May 8. Uh, she pursued her calling with quiet dignity and spirituality, and she ensured her place in history as a heroine to women on many levels, not only for her piety, but also as a writer, a mystic, and a visionary. Her approach to God is arguably more relevant today than in her own day. A God of mercy, a God of forgiveness, a God of joy, and most importantly, a God of love. So you ask, okay, Jan, what does this Ankarite woman, living on her own in a cell, how does she find joy? How can she be related? How can she be a model of joy? Well, I'm, it, I'm going to tell you in the first quote that I say here, because it, it says it all, and then we'll kind of unpack it. But Julian has a quote, and it says, "I saw that God rejoices that he is our Father, God rejoices that he is our mother, and God rejoices that he is our true spouse, and that our soul is his beloved wife. And Christ rejoices that he is our brother, and Jesus rejoices that he is our Savior. These are five high joys, as I understand, in which he wishes that we rejoice." A quote of pure unending joy. And a quote that purely and truly embodies her theology, her joy in God. Julian wrote The Revelations of Divine Love, a book that has been in print now for some 700 years. She wrote the book after experiencing the 16 visions, or Revelations of Jesus himself. And she called these revelations "shewings," S H E W I N G S, not showings, but shewings. And she writes that they took possession of her life and her very soul. Soon after experiencing these shewings, she decided to live a solitary life. She wrote each and every detail as well as she could down of each shewing that she had. Throughout her shewings, Julian was taught that joy is the greatest flourishing of human nature. To find your joy and share it with others. Remember, this was a time, though, for Julian where she was recovering from a terrible, terrible sickness, and most thought that she would die. She writes that God created us out of joy so that we would enjoy him and share in the joy which is the Trinity. Julian's reflections on the joy of God and the five ways in which God rejoices in us. These five ways correspond to the five ways Julian saw Christ suffering in his passion. She saw him suffering as father, she saw him suffering as mother, she saw him suffering as spouse, she saw him suffering as brother, and she saw him suffering as the Savior that he was, Jesus. And all these are connected, they all have relation to each other. Julian writes that our response to those five high joys is that we are to be praising him, thanking him, loving him, and endlessly blessing him. These joys do not mean that we can expect never to feel hardship or sorrow, but rather that our whole character is turned to God in a trust that is only possible because of the mystery of God and the work, his work in us and through us. And I like this quote, and it's from her. And so I wanted to add it to the PowerPoints, my slides. She says, "My, how busy we become when we lose sight of how God loves us." And isn't that the truth? I mean, I know for me personally, sometimes I get so busy that I lose sight of that. I forget to pray, I forget that I am wrapped in God's everlasting love. It's, it's easy to do. And I know that with COVID right now and our shelter in places is difficult and hard, and we don't get to see our loved ones, we get to see them via Zoom. But perhaps we can look at it in a certain way as a certain gift to be able to feel, take that time to be able to feel the warmth and the love and the joy of God in our own lives and in our hearts. I believe the most important teaching Julian takes is from her 15th revelation of the divine love, that Christ wants us to find comfort in the transcendent joy he is preparing for our soul. And I just want to say something about this picture, there's another cat in there. And if, uh, I don't know if you remember the other slide with the other cat. But she has her hands in the, in the pontocrotor, which is in the sign of powerful or almighty, the sign of teacher or master. And it really resembles an icon of Jesus, of, of her, of her hand placed like that with her other hand on the book. And I felt that that was a really neat resemblance for her to have that. She understands, Julian understands from these words, "And thou shalt come up above, and thou shalt have me for my, for thy reward, and thou shalt be filled with joy and bliss." Julian tells us that we must, and I quote her, "Focus the point of our thought on misbeholding as often as possible, for as long as the Lord will lead us into such exalted contemplation by his grace." "To concentrate on the glorious love, joy, and compassion of Christ, the fruit and the purpose of prayer is to be one with and like God in all things." Again, that's one of her quotes. In other words, Julian urges us to learn to meditate not on our sufferings, but on the glorious love, joy, and compassion of Christ, who will release us from those sufferings. She urges us to concentrate less on our misery and fear of damnation and more on the future joy of salvation. If we do, she says, "It will be greatly to God's honor and our own reward." Julian is known for her famous quote, "All shall be well, all shall be well, and in all manner of things shall be well." And she says that she, when she would ask Jesus numerous questions, his answer to her would be this, "All shall be well." And she said that he would say it so tenderly and gently, without blame or any kind of, you know, impatience or anything like that, it was just all so tender that that became her mantra and how she lived. This quote has given people hope and trust and joy for hundreds of years. As an Ankarite, she was effectively considered dead to the world, as we heard about, they had an actual funeral for her. Yet she found great joy in her relationship with Jesus, and she chose the life of an Ankarist to leave any distractions between she and her beloved Christ. She lived in a time of turmoil, she saw the destruction of the Black Plague and the Reformation of the Church, just to name a few. But her theology was optimistic, and she spoke and wrote about God's unlimited and perfect love in terms of joy and compassion. And I love this quote from her, "The fullness of joy is to behold God in everything." Revelations of Divine Love contain messages of optimism based on the certainty of being loved by God and of being protected by his provisions. She wrote that God sees us as perfect and waits for the day when human souls mature so that evil and sin will no longer hinder us. "God is nearer to us than our own soul," she wrote. And this theme is repeated in her work. Julian of Norwich understood the central message for spiritual life, and that is, God is love, and it is only if one opens oneself to this love totally and with total trust, and lets it become one soul guide in life, that all things are transfigured, true peace and true joy found, and one is able to radiate it. So such is Julian of Norwich and joy. She found joy completely and totally in her, her, her love of Christ and in her solitude. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you, Father John. I think it's about time, is it good time? Okay.
Great. Thanks, Jan. That, uh, your words wash over us and are very consoling and calm our anxious hearts and spirits and kind of become a, a channel for Julian in extending the joy that she experienced in her relationship with Christ to all of us. Kristoff, did you set up us for, uh, for our breakups?
We can do that. How many people would you like to have in a group?
How about five to a room? We've done this a couple of times before.
Oh, oh, you know what?
You have to do it beforehand.
Yes, and you know, when I had to uninstall my Zoom and reinstall it, um, I have to completely go into the setting and do that again. So it, it doesn't show up at the bottom as one of my options.
Okay, well, you'll have to change that for next time, won't you now?
Yes, yeah.
Father John?
Yes.
I do have a, a little fun prayer I was going to read at the end. Would that be, would it be okay if I just added that?
It, it is, but why don't you save that for the end? And since we, I thought we would be able to, you know, come into smaller groups. And, you know, hopefully we'll be able to do that at some future point. But that sense of joy, let me ask all of you. And where have you found joy in the midst of the last many months of undergoing this torment and turmoil of this pandemic?
Hold on, Father John, I just, just found out, so I can create, um, uh, breakout rooms. How many do you want me to create? We have 36 people on there.
Uh, well, then.
Six.
Six groups, right.
Okay.
And there's your question, everyone. In the midst of everything else, where have you found some of the joy which Julian of Norwich has described?
Okay.
That's been described for us.
Here we go.
We only have a few minutes, but let's make them worthwhile.